Of Appeals, please listen to the rules and procedures that will follow for tonight's meeting.
Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Town of Babylon Zoning Board of Appeals. The following is the procedure that will be followed tonight. The matters will be called in the order they appear on the calendar, with adjourned matters being called at the end of the regularly scheduled matters. Matters cannot be heard prior to their published scheduled time. When your matter is called, please submit the affidavit of posting to the secretary, and proceed to the podium and give your name and address. The chairperson will then swear you in, and read into the record information we have from your application, comments from various town departments, and any correspondence received on your application. The chairperson will then ask you to make whatever presentation you wish to make to the board. After you have made your presentation, the board will ask whatever questions the board deems appropriate, and then we will ask for comments from the public. If you wish to speak for or against an application, we ask that you wait until you are acknowledged, come forward, give us your name and address, tell us where your property is in relation to the property that's in question tonight, and then please direct your comments to the board, not the applicant or the applicant's representative. We have to keep a record, and we cannot do that if there are people talking over each other or cross-conversations. If someone has spoken for or against an application, and they have said exactly the same thing that you wish to say, it will have the same force and effect in the record if you give your name and address, are sworn in, and say that you join in those comments. If you have anything additional to say, please don't hesitate to do so, but keep in mind that you will be given only one opportunity to speak. After the public has spoken, the board may ask the applicant to come back to answer any questions that may have come up as a result of the public comment, or for the applicant to summarize. When the applicant comes back to answer any additional questions, if that happens, that does not start a second round of public comments. Once the matter has been heard, various things may occur. The board may decide the application immediately. It may reserve decision. If the board reserves decision, that does not mean the matter is approved or denied, it just means that the board needs more time to decide, may want to go out and look at the site again, or might want to review the documents and testimony further before making a decision. In either event, the applicant will receive the board's decision in writing shortly after the board makes its decision. If the application is approved, that does not mean that you can then go ahead and start construction, or whatever it is that you requested from the board. You will have to wait for the building permit to be obtained from the Building Department before your go-ahead. On some occasions, the matter may be continued for another night. If it is continued, in most cases, it will be for the submission of documents, a new survey, new plans, or something of that nature. If that's the case, no one needs to come back on the new date. The documents will be submitted, and no further testimony will be taken. On rare occasions, a matter may be continued for future testimony. If that's the case, then people would have to come back to testify. If matters are adjourned at an open meeting on the scheduled date of hearing, no further notice need be given unless specifically required by the board on the date the adjournment is granted. Three rules that may affect your ability to proceed tonight. One, if the sign was not posted for 10 days, we cannot hold the hearing tonight. Two, if you commence this proceeding while you own the property but no longer own the property, and you are here now to continue with the application, you will need either the written consent of the new owner or the new owner to be present for the hearing. This situation could come about if you sold your house or building, money was held in escrow at closing for a certificate of occupancy or permit, and you're here tonight to clear that up. Lastly, if your application is a commercial application, and it's other than a renewal, and there is more than one tenant in the building, then you need your landlord to be here. Is there any applicant that has any difficulty with those situations and would need an adjournment tonight?
Is there anyone that would need an adjournment? Please rise and join the ward in Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First application is Application 25-135 of Janet Edwards, property located in Wyandanch. Name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Bloor, the architect for the project, 60 Carlton Avenue, Suite 202, ISEUP Terrace, New York, 11752.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated August 20th, 2025, environmental control memo dated August 29th, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by William Simmons dated January 26th, 2025, tax map acting as an area map.
Chairman, we have four photographs and a site plan by Thomas Bloor dated January 28th, 2025.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
The intent of this application is to construct a new second-story addition. We're just requesting a side yard setback of 9.9 feet instead of required 12 feet. Second floor is going up directly atop the existing first floor. It's a single-family home with an unfinished basement underneath. My client, Janet Edwards, owns the home, lives with her daughter. The intent is for her daughter to live upstairs, enjoy some larger bedrooms, more living space. I've reviewed the Planning Department's comments. We have no issues with the conditions, and we'll provide you guys with an additional copy of that deed. That parcel to the left was purchased by my client, held in her single name, so we have no issues with the, you know, merging them together. Board should have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, straight up, we're going, right?
Exactly.
Okay, and would you agree to no accessory apartments? And also, well, you just said that you'll agree to merge the lots and no enclosure of the front portico?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none? We'll hold it. We're gonna hold the application until we receive the thing and you merge the two lots.
Yep, I ordered it last week, should be here early next week.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna close the hearing, reserve decision, I'm gonna keep the record open for the other deed and the merging of the lots.
Sounds good, thank you. Have a good evening.
Next application is Application 25-136 of Douglas Berry and Christina A. Gura, property located in West Babylon. Name and address for the record.
Generico Zolino, 2125 Deer Park Avenue, Deer Park, New York, 11729. Here for the homeowner, Douglas Bedry, residing at 531 Empire Avenue, West Babylon.
Okay, do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated August 20th, 2025. Approval from this board is case number 4104, and I really can't make out the date. It goes back a ways, though. Environmental control memo dated August 29th, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by... On the... I don't have a name on this either. The date on it is January 7th, 2019. Tax map acting as an area map, and?
Chairman, there's six photographs and a site plan by Michelangelo dated June 11th, 2025.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Yes, we're pretty much replacing the existing attached garage. The foundation is failing, and we're building over the same footprint of the existing foundation. So, we'll be maintaining the same side yard of 10.1 feet instead of the 12 feet that's required, difference of 1.9 feet. Variance for garage square footage, requesting 570.12 square feet instead of the permitted 500 square feet, a difference of 70.12 square feet. Variance for total building area, requesting to maintain 46.5% instead of the permitted 20%, a difference of 26.5% or 2,050 square feet, of which 2,020 square feet are patio and walkways. The patio, as to the Planning Department's question, the patio was redone in 2019, and requires a variance for side yard, requesting to maintain 0.5 feet, or 6 inches instead of the permitted 2 feet, a difference of 1.5 feet. And Planning Department also had another question regarding the interior wall. The interior wall is in between the two garages, is used to be the existing exterior wall. So, that's why it's there. It's not proposed, it's existing, and the homeowner wants to leave it. That is it.
Good, thank you. Turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd. How are you?
How are you?
Good. So, there was never any living space in either one of the...
No.
...side of this?
No.
And would you agree that they're not... Can they never be converted into living space?
Of course.
Okay. No habitable space permitted in the garage?
Correct.
Now and in the future? And no commercial work permitted in the garage?
Of course.
Okay. Is there any way we can reduce the patio back a foot and a half?
It can be cut back. It would be... Let's see. So, right now, we have...
Would it create any other hardships, or?
I mean, it was finished to the edge where the concrete used to be, so when it was replaced...
Put it back where?
And now, yeah. So, they went as far as the concrete used to be. They just added the patio.
The foundation was only failing on the one side?
On the one side, yes.
Yeah. All right, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Application 25-136 with the conditions listed on the planning memo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening.
Next application is Application 25-137 of Michael J. and Elaine Barone, property located in West Babylon. Name and address for the record, please.
Brian Fiore, 208 North Wisconsin Avenue, Massapequa.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated August 20th, 2025. Environmental control memo dated August 29th, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Paul Borowski dated November 6th, 2024. Tax map acting as an area map, and?
Chairman, there's 16 photographs and a site plan by Brian Fiore. Fiore, sorry. Dated July 30th, 2025.
And we just need an amendment. The zoning district was advertised as Residence C, it is zoned Residence C.
I'll make a motion to amend Application 25-137 to amend the zoning from Residence B to Residence C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Sure. So, we started off designing a second-story addition for the Barones, which met the zoning requirements, but all these items built without permits have come up. So, that permit is issued. So, the detached garage, the rear deck, and there's a prefab gazebo on the deck, all requiring variances. The garage, the prior garage was converted into habitable space, so that's the reason why they built a detached garage. It was built in approximately 1990, and it's right on the property, a foot, 0.9 feet from the property line on the side, and 2 feet from the rear. So, we're requesting relief from those variances. So, it has been there for 35 years without any issues. The deck is attached to the house along with the gazebo on the deck, so it's, you know, it's much closer to the rear yard since it's attached to the house. They were all built around the same time. The gazebo was probably added on later, but the deck and the garage were built in approximately 1990. There is a rear addition that I was assumed already had a permit. It's an enclosed porch, it's fully glassed in enclosure, it's not heated, and it's part of the house, and it's actually on this survey from 1988. I have a copy of, if I could submit it. So, there's sliding doors in the back of the house that lead to that room that's, you know, not heated space, it's a sunroom. And that room is 25 feet from the property line instead of 30. And we have no objections to any of the conditions posed by the board for approval.
Okay, thank you. Turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
How are you?
Hi.
Good. So, are we putting an addition on?
There's a... There is a second-story addition going on this house that has a permit without any zoning.
We're just legalizing everything?
So, these items came up during that review process.
Okay. So, we're just cleaning things up?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Doesn't seem like anything was filed since the mid-'80s on the property.
Yeah. And we have a floor plan submitted now with this application?
There are only garage plans, so there's no house plans with this application, just site plans.
And what about the addition?
I didn't even know the addition was part of this application, honestly, so...
We don't have plans?
There are plans with... We do have plans for it with the proposed work. I have the whole house, you know, drawn up with the other application, so I could submit them if you want.
I could be wrong, but I understand that we don't have them.
No.
And when was it? How long ago was the detached garage made, constructed?
35 years ago, approximately.
And there's an awning on the side of it?
There, yeah, there are retractable awnings on the side, most likely, just for shade in the backyard.
And how long has this owner owned the place?
Many years prior, I believe. I'm not 100% sure, but...
35 years?
Plus, probably closer to 50 years.
So, it's the guilty party?
Yes.
Okay. Trying to find out. I... Well, we're gonna need... You're gonna need to give... We're gonna need plans first.
Okay.
So, I don't know what we can do until then, but... I don't think I have any further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you just... I just... All right, I'm gonna ask you. Would you agree if the garage ever be taken down or be in disrepair, that it must be rebuilt in a conforming location?
Yes.
No habitable space permitted in the garage?
Yep.
No commercial work permitted in the garage?
Yes.
Gazebo permitted as a temporary structure only. If taken down, it must be rebuilt in a conforming location?
Yes.
And the rear deck not being enclosed. You agree to all of this?
Yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes. Is the gazebo permanently secured to the deck?
It's bolted to the deck, yeah, yeah. But it seems like it's a, you know, every couple of years type of purchase, so they only last for so long, so I guess for the life of that gazebo in that location, we're requesting a variance there.
Will the patio be removed?
Yes, that was... We were removing the patio to avoid that variance.
Is this whole section going to be removed?
Yes, next to the garage, between the deck and the garage.
So, what is the garage operating as now? It's a garage?
It's just storage. Because they don't have a garage where the original garage was, it was converted.
Right.
Storage. Storage. So, and what about... So, then, if you got all that storage, they have two other sheds on the property also?
We're removing those sheds.
Bolted them?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, wow, yeah, okay. All right, any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We're gonna close the hearing, we're gonna reserve decision, we're gonna keep the record open for new... For floor plans for the addition that you're putting on. And that's it, thank you.
Sure.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
The next applications are Applications 25-143A and 143B, property located in Wyandanch. Name and address for the record, please.
For the applicant, Thomas Monteglio, Law Office of Bonjono Monteglio, Michelin Palmieri, 200 Old Country Road, Suite 680, Menial, New York. For the applicant, Thomas Monteglio, Senior.
Okay, for the record, on Application 25-143A, we have a planning memo dated August 20th, 25. There are a number of covenants and restrictions on this. We also have environmental control memo dated September 3rd, 2025. If we were to approve the application, we'd need to adopt a negative declaration. On the B application, we have the same paperwork as on the A application. On Application A, we have a survey by Elizabeth McQuilkin dated April 14th, 25. Same thing on the B application, and then we have an overhaul, which doesn't have the name on it, but I'm assuming, which might be a bad thing, that it's also by Elizabeth McQuilkin, and also dated April 14th, 2025, and a tax map acting as an area map, and?
Chairman, there's four photographs and on both site plans, Lot 1 and Lot 2, there's a... And by manual, 10 adding dated February 18th, 2025.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Sure. This is a request for a subdivision of three lots into two buildable lots and erection of two new single-family... Two-story, single-family homes in each lot. With regard to Lot Number 1, we'd be asking for a variance to diminish the front street width from 75 feet to 66.67 feet on Lake Drive, as well as diminish the lot area from 7,500 square feet to 66.53.72 square feet, and diminish the front yard setback from 30 feet to 20 feet on William Street in that Lot Number 1's in the corner. With regard to Lot Number 2, the application is to diminish the width of the front line, the front street line from 75 feet to 65.37 feet, and diminish the rear yard setback from 30 feet to 21.05 feet for a portion of the rear setback.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, the application would be to... And then erect two singles... Two-story, single-family homes on each property.
Okay. So, the floor plans show a proposed foundation plan with an unfinished basement and egress window are crossed out?
So, the property will have a crawl space, no basement.
No crawl... No basement, rather.
Correct. Both homes will have crawl spaces only.
Only crawl spaces, okay.
We would recommend a covenant stating.
Okay. Would you agree to a covenant stating that they, you know, crawl spaces?
Yes, that'd be fine.
And would you agree to all of the covenants and restrictions on both applications? There are 12 covenants and 17 restrictions that should have been on the planning memo. Would you agree to all of those?
Yes.
Okay, and we're going to add... Oh, we adding a condition?
Adding a covenant.
Covenant?
No.
Okay. Okay, I have no other questions. Any other questions from the board?
You hooking up to the sewers?
Yes.
You took... This was three lots, and you're making it into two lots?
That is correct.
Am I correct?
That is correct.
All right, that's good. All right, would anybody like to be heard on this application? Sure, come on up. I need you at the microphone only because we're recording. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ann Stewart. I live at 137 Commonwealth Drive, Wyandanch, New York. And this project...
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
And please refer to us.
Okay, I'm sorry. These two projects are but my project. I'm on Commonwealth, and it's on the back of me. And I just need clarity. Are we talking two houses on Lot 1 and two houses on Lot 2?
No, two houses total, one each.
Total, okay.
That's it?
Then I'm fine.
Thank you for coming. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion on application... Oh, no, I'm gonna first not adopt a negative declaration on Applications 25-143A and 143B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'm gonna make a motion to approve Applications 25-143A and 143B.
Second.
With all the covenants and restrictions on the planning memo is dated August 20th. And yet, the additional one, that it'd only be a crawl space, no basement.
That's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next one.
Yeah, I did.
One of you stood. Next application is Applications... 25-140A and 25-140B, property located in West Babylon.
Yes.
Name and address for the record.
Christine Fay, Accurate Expediting, 286A Belmont Avenue, West Babylon, New York.
Okay. And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. On Application A, 25-140A, we have a planning division memo dated August 20th, 2025. There are a number of same covenants and restrictions, just on the last application, the same thing. There is also Zoning Board of Appeals approval from case number 06220A. There are a number of restrictions on here. That was dated July 13th, 2006. Apartment Environmental Control memo dated September 3rd, 2025. If we approve this, we'd need a negative declaration. We have a Suffolk County Planning memo dated September 3rd, 2025. Decision of local determination, take no position for or against. On the B or 2 application, we have all of that same paperwork as I just read it on the other applications. We also have a resolution number 2007-116 by Planning Board, job number 0655B. Environmental Control memo dated September 3rd, 2025. Again, we need a negative declaration. On the A application, we have a survey by Meets and Bounds Surveying dated July 14th, 25. Same thing on the B application. And then we have an overhaul, also by Meets and Bounds, and I can't read the date on that, but I'm taking a guess that it's the same as the last one. Tax map acting as an area map, and?
Chairman, there's nine photographs.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We respectfully submit this application as stated in the call of the hearing. I will address comments made by planning. With respect to Lot 1, the proposed new home, it will be a single-family dwelling with no basement entrance, only an egress window. There will be no enclosed front porch. It will be owner-occupied and follow the covenants and restrictions as commented by planning. I will now go over the setback reliefs. Front yard, 30 feet to 29.8. Front yard 30 feet to 29.8. The reason for the measurement is that when meeting with planning, they suggested we keep in line with the other homes next door, so we took the difference between the lots, divided, and came up with that measurement of 29.8, which we feel is not substantial. If requested by the, uh, required by this board, we can comply. Total side yards, we feel again, are not substantial, we're asking for a 3.8-foot relief. The rear yard setback, we are asking for 30, except for the egress window portion, which will be 25 feet. The building area is only over by 20 square feet. And for the permission for the front, your, front street lines and subdivision mostly, that's why we're here. With respect to Lot Number 2, which is the existing home, the home is a one-story, single-family with crawl space under the kitchen and the bathroom. With respect to the setbacks sought there, the front yard setback is existing and minimus from 30 to 25 feet. The east side yard and the total side yards are a result from the proposed subdivision. The existing driveway will be moved to the other side of the, the home with proper permits. Again, this property will be owner-occupied and follow covenants and restrictions based on planning comments. Planning had made comments about Ms. Moynihan keeping with the original plan that the previous owner had applied for. The reason being is that my client lives there as a single mom of a 14-year-old son and does not have the means to do so. In fact, she recently received a grant to make improvements on her home, as requested by the town in the exploratory meeting, if she wasn't knocking her home down. Planning Board also stated there were not plans submitted for existing home nor a plot plan. Respectfully, we did submit a survey with the existing home. No floor plan was required at the time of submission. We feel this proposal aligns with the existing nature and character of the neighborhood, and would not pose any detriment to the community, but in fact, complement the orderly growth of West Babylon. The proposed lots will each retain their own tax lot number, as shown on the Town of Babylon Radius Map that I have submitted to the board, as well as their own addresses, which already are 1567 Street and 1564 Seventh Street. As part of my preparation and in performing my due diligence, collecting and sharing as much information I can with the neighbors to support this application, I was able to speak to some of the immediate neighbors. Neighbor two houses to the east, across the street, and directly behind the subject property. I was told by one of the neighbors that the house directly to the east, abutting the proposed new home, is vacant. I have submitted to the board the sign, the signatures of the neighbors. I'm actually gonna submit that now. I would like the board to consider approving this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
How are you? Hi.
So, on Lot A, we have on the planning memo here, there's, it shows that there's a eight-foot garage door?
It's actually, we're gonna make it a seven.
So, we're not, we're on eight?
It's not gonna wait, not gonna be eight, it's gonna be seven. I forgot to write that, actually, sorry.
Okay. And, have we filed permits for the work that's being, you said that you were doing something in coordination with the town?
So, she had received a grant to do exterior work of her house. That's already been done, on the existing home.
Just on the exterior?
Yes.
I see there's old building materials there, went by yesterday.
Siding, windows.
Is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay. And, if approved, you'd agree to all this covenants and restrictions?
Absolutely.
12 and 17 of them? Anything else?
Environment, test board, and elevation.
Has it been test board, has the ground been test board, for mortar?
Has it been test board yet? I'm not sure, did we, not yet.
All right, we're gonna need it.
If it's a requirement, yes, we had agreed to do that.
Okay, I'm gonna need it.
We would need that before the board can make a decision.
This board? Okay.
I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
If you're not requesting any changes for the rear and setback, it should be amended to reflect the egress window. Those advertised to 30 for the dwelling, but the window would make it 25. Unless on Lot A.
You're on, so... Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to amend application 25-14A, Lot 1, to re-diminish rear yard setback from 40 feet to 25 feet for egress window.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, just get the test board?
Yeah.
Or can you make a decision based on getting that?
No, you're proposing a basement, so they need the test board and elevation.
Okay. Okay.
We're gonna close the hearing, we're gonna reserve decision, we're gonna keep the record open for the test boards that we're recording, okay?
Okay, beautiful, thank you.
Thank you. Application is, application 25-139, BP Products North America, property located Name an address for the record.
Chris Tartaglia, from High Point Engineering, 1860 Walt Whitman Road, Melville, New York, 11747.
And, do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, we have a planning memo dated August 20th, '25, environmental control memo dated August 29th, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A Suffolk County planning memo dated September 3rd, 2025, decision of local determination, take no position for or against. We have a survey by John Ferentello, dated June 20th, 2010, tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman, there's two photographs.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
First, I'd just like to pass up the affidavit of posting, by the way.
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, we're here on a relatively ministerial application, we're just renewing an existing signed variance, which has expired. Uh, there's been no changes to the signed, uh, based on what was previously approved, and respectfully requesting reapproval of what was previously approved.
Okay, thank you. Turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
I'm glad to have the operating, and approved, so I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board?
The current sign for me, when is that?
Expiring.
Um, so I know the variance expired in late June, um, we started the process then, and that's why we're here tonight. The signed permit itself, I presume, gets renewed after this board grants their approval, then we can renew the signed permit. I believe that's the way it works.
Oh, they're on...
Okay, so you're up at the same time?
Yeah, they're up at the same time.
I, I believe they run concurrently, I'll have to check, but I'm, that would make sense if they did. If it's, requires renewal, we'll renew it.
Perfect. I was gonna say to run at the same time, so you have, won't have that problem.
Agreed, I think that's a building department determination, though not mine, but we'll make sure that that happens.
I would still recommend an increment of two, when it goes together. Two or...
Make it two? Okay.
Makes sense.
All right. I make a motion to approve application 25-139 for a period of four years.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? Sir?
Next, next application is application 25-142 of Eagle Elite Auto Repair, property located in West Babylon. You are on tonight. That's okay. You guys are gonna double team us now?
Yep.
Name an address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gerard Glass for the applicant with Chris Tartaglia, who you just met recently, and I think you know from other applications, 72 East Main Street, Babylon.
Okay, for the record, we have a planning division memo dated August 20th, 2025. Environmental Control memo dated September 3rd, 2025. Recommended secret determination, pending public hearing, or so it's pending our hearing, I guess, secret. Fire marshals report dated September 4th, 2025, has a valid fire permit. A survey by Galiya Surveying Group dated December 5th, 2023. Tax map acting as an area map. Are we hearing, are these the same?
Yeah.
We're hearing the signs too, so we'll hear them together?
Yeah.
That'd be better, you're sure?
That'd be better for us, too. Go ahead. Uh, and on application 25-141, also of Eagle Elite Auto Repair, property located in West Babylon, we have a planning memo dated August 25th, 2025. Environmental Control memo dated August 29th, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. We have the same survey by Galiya Surveying, dated 12/5/2023. Tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman, there's 10 photographs on the site plan by Chris Tartaglia, dated November 27th, 2023.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
Surely, the premises is owned by Eagles Elite Auto Repair. This is a family-owned business, um, one of the principals, actually, two of the principals are here, but I've been dealing primarily with Jesse Velazquez, who has been speaking on behalf of the partnership, and is here to answer any questions you may have as well. The automotive use at this location has existed since 1966. We'll talk about the development plan in just a moment, I'm gonna primarily leave that to Chris, um, but just briefly, it's 23,094 square feet in terms of lot size, it's on the southeast corner of 270 Wyandance Avenue and Mount Avenue, West Babylon. It's zoned industry GA. This is an industrial area, as you all know, it's surrounded by auto repair uses, um, commercial warehouses, uh, and industrial-type storage uses, um, pretty much all around. It is improved by a building that was previously used as a filling station, which is an important part of this application, and a repair shop by CO. The filling station discontinued in 2010, and it has been currently used, uh, for many years as an auto repair shop, run by the family. The applicant seeks to convert this building into a 2,794-square-foot gasoline station. There will be no auto repair use. The station will have a convenience store and a fast-food counter. Uh, there will be two extensions added of 280 square feet and 332 square feet to the existing structure. There will be a restroom, of course, that fully complies with the ADA. There will be no tables or seats. The business, um, is intended to operate 24 hours, seven days a week. There will be a 2,400-square-foot canopy above four pump islands. The site has a history of this use based upon the CO. One of the really important parts of this application is the site is sorely in need of a renovation. The proposed improvements, I think, will improve both the utility and visual appearance of the site, and I'm gonna, it's just if I can, bring up Chris Tartaglia to explain the development as the project engineer.
Uh, my appearance for the record for this application, Chris Tartaglia, from High Point Engineering, 1860 Walt Whitman Road, Melville, New York, 11747.
Affirm to tell the truth again?
I do again.
Okay. Would you like to tell us?
Okay, uh, Mr. Glass has done a great job of the overview of the project, um, on the screens in front of you, and to my right, um, there's a black-and-white version on your screens, and a colored version of the proposed layout. Essentially, we've got a pie-shaped parcel, and that pie-shaped parcel is actually, um, the driver of a couple of the variances that we need, uh, in particular, um, the setbacks for the tanks. The configuration of the site is such that, and, and we struggle with this all the time, with the angular or pie-shaped sites, that, uh, there's a big inefficiency of layout, particularly at the corner, uh, because there's really nothing you can locate there. So, um, where we've located these tanks is actually idealized, because the tanker will pull in from Mount Avenue and be able to sit actually in the loading area, which is designated as a no-parking loading zone, offload the fuel, and then pull back out onto Mount Avenue. Um, what you can't see on this plan are actually the underground drywells and, um, uh, various items related to the sewer systems and things like that, which all require certain setbacks. So, the location of those tanks is really idealized, it does necessitate the variances, but obviously, the critical issue with that is, these tanks are underground, under a concrete mat. Once installed, they will be completely, uh, unnoticedable to anybody, so the variances really have no effect on anything in the community, or, um, any health and safety, for that matter. Um, with regard to the variances on the building-related, so we do need rear yard setback variances, we are adding some small additions to the rear of that building. As Mr. Glass noted, uh, the building is existing where it's located now, and all we're doing with these extensions is just creating a little bit more room inside that building for utility and storage areas, um, so that we can get a good retail offering in the front of the building where the customers will inhabit it. It's noted that, um, based on the aerial photo, that the building immediately adjacent to us, or the property immediately adjacent to us, is industrial in nature, um, appears to be storing some automobiles and some construction-related equipment, um, so there's certainly no impact to those, uh, that adjoining property based on these setbacks. Even though, uh, we are still landscaping that entire area, um, in the back, adding landscaping, whereas now, there's really no landscaping whatsoever. That really covers, I think, the, um, bulk variances for the first application, um, but I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that anybody may have on this application, and then maybe move to the signage.
Okay. Uh, turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd. How are you?
Hi.
Number of employees?
Typically, during the main shift of the day, which would be the morning to the afternoon, would probably be three, um, later on in the day, and overnight, probably one to two.
And how many parking spaces are we anticipating?
Uh, we are code-compliant as to parking, uh, 14 required and 14 provided, including an ADA parking stall.
Okay, and dumpster, is that on the plan here?
Yep, dumpster enclosure is gonna be located over here, um, along the, uh, Mount Avenue side of the property, and we're gonna be, um, screening that dumpster with evergreens.
Okay, um, the other gentleman mentioned fast food, can you elaborate on that for us?
Yeah, so, um, the actual, um, food vendor has not been decided, but in discussions with Mr. Velazquez, who, um, Mr. Glass mentioned is, is the operator, um, we believe it's gonna be a deli-type offering, uh, primarily for offerings for breakfast and lunch, um, but we don't have that completely worked out yet, however, as I'm sure the board is familiar, most of the modern convenience stores are, are offering some type of a grab-and-go food offering. Notably, there's no seating proposed within the building, so these are literally just order quickly, get in and out quickly. It's not a restaurant, it's a takeout operation.
Okay, um, I was by the property yesterday, and the, um, parking, the asphalt and everything is in disrepair, we're gonna, is anything gonna be done with that? Is it all gonna be...
Indeed, this is a complete rebuild, the building will remain, but everything else will be replaced, and that even includes the sidewalks along the roadway, along both frontages, the curbs, every piece of asphalt within curbing, um, it is literally a complete rehab of this property.
Okay, and the other gentleman mentioned there's gonna be 24/7?
Yes, sir.
That, we might put you on a short leash with that, you can, you maybe, or allow it, but we're gonna, we'll, we'll discuss that.
Okay.
All right? You're not too far from a residential neighborhood.
So, as to the 24-hour nature of the use, you know, with, um, oftentimes with the suppliers, um, it's something that ties in, sometimes you can get around that, and sometimes you can't. We understand if it is problematic, that it should be on a short leash, and you should be able to call us back.
Okay, sure, I understand, gentlemen.
Absolutely. Um, are you done otherwise, Chris?
For the main application, I can discuss signage as needed.
Mr. Chairman, any other questions for Chris?
Any questions, few more?
Um, yeah, the, sorry, Marco. Uh, the curb cuts, are they all existing, or some proposed?
They're actually in their existing locations, they're being widened slightly to accommodate the traffic, um, so in almost every instance, the curb cuts are about 25 to 28 feet wide, and we're just widening them to 30 feet, um, to be, just be more roomy for cars to get in and out.
Very active corner lot. Not the lot itself, but that's a very active intersection right there, so, that's interesting to put it, what you're proposing. Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
For now.
Do you have a planning board application open?
We do, yeah, the only reason it hasn't been closed out is that, um, the comment, the last comment letter we got from planning and from all departments, very, very, very minor comments... we got from planning and from all departments, very, very, very minor comments. So in lieu of multiple revisions to the plan package, what we wanted to do was get to this meeting, see if there were any significant changes that needed to be made, revise the plans one more time, and make the final submissions to the town to wrap everything up.
Also, why do the fuel tanks need to be located in the proposed location?
As I started with, my first comment, so the location of the tanks will allow the tanker truck to come in from Mount Avenue and sit right here along the curb out of the flow of traffic to fill the tanks, and then return back to Mount Avenue. The problem we have here is it's a pie-shaped site, so we do lose some space. In other words, if this were a more rectangular site, we'd be able to better comply with those setbacks. But I think the ameliorative factor here is that the tanks are below ground, completely unnoticedable once installed to anybody. So we believe that it's a de minimis variance. While it is a variance from the code, there's really no effect or impact to the neighborhood. And honestly, the effects are positive because it allows the truck to sit out of the way of traffic and in a safe location while he's delivering.
Another question. So I know you mentioned about the property maintenance and the debris. Can you confirm that the site will be well-maintained while the process is being obtained as opposed to permits and stuff?
Yes. We have ownership here with us, as was mentioned, and we did note in the planning memo that that has been an ongoing concern for this property. And I think really what's emblematic of this application is that the auto repair use is certainly one which is antiquated and difficult. And modernizing this facility with the investment really will give it a complete aesthetic and operational upgrade, which is what's needed, so they can bring the money in to better maintain the facility and keep it up to snuff.
Okay. We've got a list of recommended conditions here that we're going to ask you to agree to. Zoning Board field reserves the right to impose restrictions on hours of operation for both the gasoline station and the convenience store.
Understood.
Thank you. There should be no truck deliveries or entry onto the site for the purpose of truck deliveries between the hours of 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM Monday through Friday, or between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM Saturday and Sunday.
So we will provide that direction to our suppliers and do our best to make sure it's complied with. But in full transparency, you know that these restrictions can sometimes be difficult, but they're going to have to insist on it.
Going to have to what?
Insist on it.
Insist, yeah.
Insist on compliance.
All right.
So you're going to insist on compliance?
Correct.
Okay.
About 6:00 AM, Monday through Friday.
What did I say?
Eight.
You said eight. So it was six.
No truck idling is permitted at any time. Honors to post in the deliveraries, no idling of engines, no exceptions.
Agreed.
Thank you. All delivery vehicles servicing this location must be contained onsite and has not impeded pedestrian or vehicular traffic off-site.
Agreed.
There shall be no outdoor storage of any kind on the subject premise, including but not limited to materials or vehicles.
Understood.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
There was one item that we didn't address in both the presentation and the question and answers, which was a comment by planning dealing with the setback in line of sight concerns. Is that something we can address at this time?
Sure. Go ahead. It was on the sign.
On the sign portion?
With the sign.
With the sign you're talking about.
I had questions about that also, yeah.
I just want to make sure we're into the microphone for our recording.
Sure.
We get yelled at all the time for that, just by the way.
Understood. Is this, is this a proper time to entertain it because we're hearing these jointly?
Yeah. I have one question, though, just back on this application, just for a second while I'm thinking about it. Would you anticipate any changes to the variance with the planning board approval?
No.
No, we would not. Again, the comments that had come back from the agencies, the inter-agencies, were very, very minor. No changes to the variance being heard tonight.
Okay. Fine. All right. Let's move on to the sign, then, if that's good by you guys.
So we start with, this is an issue where there's an 18-foot setback on a corner that, I don't know if it's 45 degrees, but somewhere around that. Chris will speak to the issue of line of sight, but generally speaking, I don't know that the line of sight is going to be an issue here because of the way this site is configured. Chris, can you elaborate on that?
I can, and I'm just going to refer back to the site plan that we can, that actually works. That'll be fine. So if, the board will notice, the sign is configured to be essentially at a right angle to the tangent line of the intersection. In other words, it's perpendicular to the line of sight. And the intent of the code is to ensure that as vehicles are passing, in this case, heading along Mount Avenue and traversing onto Yandanch Avenue, that there's no blockage of visibility for drivers, of pedestrians, other vehicles, et cetera. So the way we've actually got this sign oriented, if you can notice, we actually have the sign oriented so that a vehicle that is rounding that corner would be looking directly at the side of that sign, meaning the sign itself is only about 12 inches wide. So the line of sight would be completely open to the left and the right of that sign. Moreover, the required height below the sign is eight feet by code. I drive a fairly tall Ford pickup, and when I sit in that truck, my line of sight is about five feet off the ground. So we're offering higher than that here in terms of clear sight beneath the sign. Eight feet does seem to be rather extreme. I'm not sure that would be just an extremely very, very tall vehicle to have the line of sight at eight feet. But nonetheless, as I explained, this is not a situation where the sign is overhanging the right-of-way. And in fact, the sign is set back 28 feet from the curb line. So we're set back 10 feet from the roadway and an additional 18 feet from the actual curb line. So that's giving us 28 feet of clear space for a vehicle rounding that corner to be able to see clearly through to the other street, see the sidewalk, see any pedestrians. So in my opinion, based on that testimony, I believe this variance is de minimis and will not create any safety hazards.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd? No questions? Any questions from the board on the sign? Or the record? None? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? Both of them?
As far as the record, just know if there was a letter received heading into the following this report.
Would anyone like to be heard on the application?
Yes.
Are you the spokesman?
Yes.
Name an address for the record.
Travis Stewart.
I need an address.
265 Fulton Street, West Babylon, New York.
Okay. And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
What would you like to tell us?
Our major concern is the 24/7 operation at the facility. You have a residential neighborhood not too far away. I know during the presentation, there was an influence on the industrial area around it, but there is a house diagonally across the street from this location. You also have another shopping plaza down the street on the corner of Bellon Avenue and Yandanch Avenue. So we don't have any stores anywhere around the residential area that's operating 24/7. So we're wondering why in an area during this presentation that was presented as all industrial, if they're closed in the evening, why would that need to be open 24/7? So that's a major concern for the residents in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, the traffic for the trucks that will be delivering, they mentioned Mount Avenue. Mount Avenue is a residential street. Yandanch Avenue is a business street. So I would hope that they would use Yandanch Avenue to bring in deliveries and not Mount Avenue passing homes in the middle of the night.
Okay. We'll find out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like?
Travis Stewart.
He's going way all the way. Go ahead.
President of the Belmont Lake Civic Association, for the record. Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. Gentlemen, one of you, come up and answer those questions, please.
So with respect to the issue of directing the supplies of fuel to use certain streets, that's certainly something we can insist on as well.
Okay. That makes sense. So talk to us more about the 24/7.
So, you know, the 24/7 use is something that, you know, we understand if it's problematic, then so be it. We shouldn't be entitled to do it, to use it that way. It shouldn't be something that acts as a disturbance to the neighbors. However, in balancing this, we would ask for the opportunity to see if it works. And if it is problematic, put in your resolution to call us back, and we'll come back. And if we can't explain ourselves, then you have got that power to, you know, withdraw it, and we're going to have to limit the hours.
Okay. Anything else from you guys?
Thank you for your time.
Okay. All right. We're going to close the hearing. We're going to reserve decision. We will take everything you guys have to say about the, you know, 24 hours, 24/7, and so on, and try and help out. Okay? Thanks. Thanks for coming down, everybody. Okay. Next application is 25138 of NYCC 1 LLC, 228 Route 109 LLC, property located in these farming deals. Name an address for the record, please.
Brian Whalen, 607 Montark Highway, East Quogue, New York. I just want to say good evening, first of all, Chairman, and to all the board members, and thank you for your time in hearing this application.
Okay. And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. For the record, we have a planning division memo dated August 20th, 2025. We have an environmental control memo dated September 3rd, 2025. If we were to approve this application, it needs a negative declaration. We have a fire marshal's report dated September 4th, 2025, and it appears that they couldn't get in for an inspection. So before we could do anything, you would need to get the fire marshal there and send back his report to us. Suffolk County Planning Memo dated September 3rd, 2025. Decision of local determination. Take no position for or against. A survey by Jason Lettingham dated May 3rd, 2023. Tax map acting as an area map. And?
Chairman, there's five photographs on the site plan by Thomas Peterson dated June 12th, 2025.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Yes. Number one, we've been working on this with the planning board for a period of two years. We will conform to the operational hours from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, which is the maximum hours of operation of the other dispensaries. There is absolutely no onsite consumption of the product. It's actually illegal in the state. And there shall be no events inside nor outside on the grounds of the premises. Additionally, we sat down, we've submitted seven different site plans using the recommendations based on the individuals from the planning department. They initially had instructed us, Rachel, not to throw her under the bus, she did a fantastic job, but she had instructed us to put in roughly eight parking spots in the back half of the building, which is just cement. And we have three large roll-up exit doors for deliveries and receivables. And then we were subsequently told, and she actually reneged and told us not to put any parking spaces inside of the building, which then they further told us we could use for deliveries. So we didn't really understand that, but regardless, a year down the road, now we're here primarily for two reasons. Number one, that we have, need 20 parking spots. Half of this is industrial, so as you are well aware, that we need less parking per square foot for the industrial as opposed to the retail. We did ask for a couple of parking spots in the front of the location, and they said because of the requirement of handicap parking by the state regulations, that we could only put one parking of handicapped in the front of the building. Additionally, there are many marked-out parking spots on the side of the building. We also had agreed not to put any parking spots on the side. So just in the spirit of doing what we had been instructed to by the wiser members of the planning department than I, we are now here to ask for relief from 20, as I had already mentioned, to 16. The second reason specifically we're here is that this was voted on by, I guess, the town board roughly two years ago to allow for cannabis usage in an industrial G zoning, which this is. And so specifically, we were told by the state, due to the proximity requirements, as well as with the specific town here, that this was a spot that in fact would be approved. And they did give us, you know, temporary, you know, approval to build a cannabis facility on this spot. So that is the second one. And I know I was also asked by the staff, by my partner, to describe the specific security requirements that are required by state statute as well as by town statute on this specific parcel. If there's any questions, either now or later, I'd be happy to answer.
So can you confirm to us that the request of variances will not be affected by any revisions made to the site plan?
Correct.
No? Nothing else would be required?
Exactly. As we were told to propose it, we just want to, you know, work. We just want to get on with the operations of the building, again, after two long years of, you know, just paying the bills on the building.
Right. So can you, like, just go over how the place, the operation's going to work for our benefit? You know, how, what's going to be there? Is there going to be security? How, you know?
I will gladly address that, as well as my partner. First of all, there'll be 24-hour security on the site, which is a state requirement. Armed security, by the way, similar to Strain Stars and Happy Days here in the town that's been ongoing. I know Strain Stars for close to two years now, I believe, they've been open. We have to have a place where, again, was recommended by the planning department, a vestibule, per se, to check people's ID, just like in the airport. We'll have a security guard there checking the IDs of people come in. No one can come in to a dispensary as exactly like a liquor store unless you're 21 years of age or above. You can't bring a phony ID. It's a machine, just like you put $100 bills through. You put it through a scanner, and it shows, you know, the hologram, and it will show if there, there's a counterfeit ID, as opposed to a lot of these illegal stores who let kids of any age, God forbid, into the premises. Further, we have, we're going to have six, 60 days you're required to have backup cameras. We have roughly three dozen cameras at all entrances, on the roof, in case somebody would try to scale the building next door. These have to be in a multi-computer system with, you know, a large capacity to store this, which will also be tied into the local police department. So the bottom line is, we also have to have a, the gentleman who actually presented here earlier, we're putting in a sprinkler system for safety, even though there is not only non-consumption, but there's no packaging of products or any growing of products allowed on the site. It's only prepackaged goods that will come into the dispensary, period. There can be no exceptions by state law. Further, we are going to have monitors in the office that also has an alarm system that's monitored 24/7. It's actually the largest. They handle about 600 to 800 monitoring of banks, jewelry stores, other cannabis dispensaries. We actually were onsite today with the gentleman. He's the largest one in New York State, period, that he will be monitoring. So if anyone tries to break into the business, so we'll have two separate alarm systems. We have a temporarily, temporary system until we open up, of a ring alarm system currently in place in the building. So security is paramount in this business, as it should be. So security is paramount in this business, as it should be.
So you agree to what has become our standard hours of operation? Nine to nine Monday to Saturday and 10 to 8 on Sunday, right? No consumption onsite, and there should be no special events inside or outside. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
As applicants, do you confirm that we will be occupying the entire building?
Are you occupying the entire building?
Yes, we have to by Babylon rule. We can only have one usage on this property.
Okay, so I need to amend the application. So it should read, "All in connection with an existing building." Not, "All in favor?"
Aye.
Okay.
And then items 1 through 5, and your correspondence, you have orders of opposition.
Okay. And that they'll be part of the record, those letters of opposition. Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We need fire marshal. You got to get the fire marshal.
The fire marshal, we have actually been in touch with on numerous occasions, and we will gladly get him in at his earliest convenience, and we have to have the fire marshal's blessings for the sprinkler system in order to open as per Babylon Town requirement.
All right, so you're going to take care of that, because we can't move the application till you do.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, board members.
Next application is application 25131 of Domain Event Restaurant-Sports Bar.
If you just for the record, you closed that reservation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Close the hearing, reserve decision on the application 25138.
Open for fire marshal.
For fire marshal's report. We kept the record open for the fire marshal report. Name an address for the record.
My name is John Prohals from JMCigns, 35 Clayton Drive, Dix Hills, 11746. I'm here on behalf of the Main Event and Pecone Realty. We're trying to get a permit, a variance.
Hold on one second. Let me just read this stuff in.
Okay.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated August 5th, 2025. Environmental Control Memo dated August 12th, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. Suffolk County Planning Memo dated July 29th, 2025. Decision of local determination. Take no position for or against. A tax map as an area map. A survey by all county land surveying, undated. And?
Chairman, there's one photograph.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
We sort of inherited that sign from the Kodiak. They were the business prior to the Main Event, and I guess, not I guess, but it's too high and it's too big. So we want to reface it. We want to go for a variance. It's a tough location for those tenants, because you can't see the, like, the Main Event, you can't see it if you're traveling north to south, the way it's tucked away. So if we would have had a 50-square-feet sign with seven tenants, it would be very small and very tough to see, because like, the Main Event doesn't face Route 110. So it's set back like 200, 300 feet, and so we need a bigger sign. And I took photos of a lot of signs on Route 110, which are much bigger, so it's not like we're going to be an eyesore or so much bigger. This, like I said, I have photos of many signs that would be much bigger, so it's not like an eyesore.
If you'd like to submit those as part of the?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so you, what you're doing here is you're redoing this whole sign, basically?
Yeah. Well, we're not changing the Main Events, but refacing it.
Refacing it.
And we're going to clean it up, take the arrow off. They got an arrow up top that points there.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So we're going to take that off, clean it up, and then we're going to put a box of six tenants below it. But we're keeping the poles and the foundation and everything the same.
Okay. So before we can do anything, we're going to need, you know, plans, comprehensive plans, showing exactly what you're doing, what the height of the sign is, how many square feet, but we need those plans before we can, you know, move on this application.
I thought I submitted them with the application.
It doesn't match everything. On your sign plan, you said the sign is proposed 10, 11 feet from the front street line.
Right.
The existing sign says it's five feet. So that doesn't match. The height is not clearly labeled, the area is not clearly labeled. They differ from the picture submitted and then the sign plan.
Okay.
All right.
I know it's 11 feet, because I measured that myself, but I understand.
We just need something clear, with all the variances requested, one on the plan.
Okay.
All right.
18 feet and 123 square foot, and 11 feet from the property line.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. Okay, we're going to close the hearing. We're going to reserve decision. We'll keep the record open for a new plan, showing all the things that were just mentioned, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next applications are application 25100A and 25100B. Property is located in Wheatley Heights. Name an address for the record, please.
Counsel for the applicant, Deirdre Sisera, 108 Terryville Road, Porche Station, New York. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, we have a planning division memo dated August 14th, 2025, on both the A and the B application. There are a number of covenants and restrictions and conditions that will be imposed on both locations. We have Department Environmental Control Memo dated August 20th, 25. If we were to approve this application, it would need a negative declaration. That's the same paperwork that is on the B application. And, I don't have anything else.
Mr. Chairman, there's four photographs. There's two site plans by Robert J. Higgins on Lot 1. It's dated January 16th, 2025, and Lot 2 is dated July 10th, 2025.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the applications?
Sure. We're here for a subdivision of one parcel into two lots. The lot as it exists now is 176 feet of frontage, and we're proposing 88 feet frontage on both lots, so we're basically equalizing. There's already a house with a garage on the lot that will be demolished, and there'll be two new single-family, two-story dwellings built on each lot. Basically, we're bringing this property more into the nature and character of the neighborhood. As it sits, it's the largest parcel in the radius. It's the only parcel of its kind that could be divided in this way. There's only one other lot in the area that has a greater frontage. As it exists, it's 23 Perry Lane, but that doesn't have the same depth. So they would have to seek a lot area variance in order to even subdivide that property in which we would like to subdivide. Once subdivided at 88 square, 88 lot frontage on each of those lots, the parcel will still be greater than 60% conformity with the entire area. Most of the lots in the area are under that 88-feet frontage. So like I said, we're, plan is to bring this lot more into conformity with the neighborhood than it exists as it is today. The variance that we're seeking is not substantial. All the other requirements are met. We're going to be within the building envelope. We don't need lot area, side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks. We do propose two slightly different elevation plans, being there are going to be two new dwellings next to each other, if, to the satisfaction of this board. If you would like to see maybe a different variation, we'd be willing to propose that too, but we'd like to keep the floor plans the same, so the way that the two different elevations were created was so that we could still keep the interior floor plans the same, but allow the exterior to be slightly different. This is the least variance necessary, as we are splitting the lots right down the middle. And there's going to be no adverse impact or effect on the environmental or physical conditions. Like I said, this lot is still going to be larger than most of the lots in that area. And if the board has any questions?
So these are, it's a very large lot. It's 250 feet deep.
Yes.
And the only variance that you're requesting on both lots is to go from frontage from 100 feet, because it's an A-zone, to 88?
Correct.
And would you agree to all the covenants and restrictions on the plan, both planning memos?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? Name an address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Thomas, and I live at 49 Sunset Avenue, Wheatley Heights, and I'm here representing myself as a resident of Sunset Avenue, but also as the president meritus of the Concerned Tax Base of Wheatley Heights Dix Hills Civic Association.
Okay.
And the, and the members of residents of Sunset Avenue in Wheatley Heights. And so I was just asked to kind of see what was happening with this variance, and we were concerned as to what kind of development that was going to be made. 88, our property is residential A, 100 by 100, and also some of the homes were built before the code. So those homes that are on diminished lots were built before the code. So that's not, you know, something that happened.
Right.
However, 88 by, 88 by 250 doesn't bother us, I don't think. And so we just wanted to make sure, and I read the specs on the planning board report, which we don't have any objection to single-family homes with the covenant of no accessory apartment and those kinds of things. So we just appreciate your diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this applications?
Hi.
Name an address for the record.
Gina Lewin-Jackman. Address is 32 Sunset Avenue, Wheatley Heights. I'm the next-door neighbor.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions.
Get a dress us, but go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You said that there was a construction survey? Was there a survey?
There's a survey, yes.
Yes, and I wanted to know when survey was performed. I thought you said August of 2025. And I wanted to request a copy. The reason being, we just made some property changes to our home, and I'm not sure if that's been taken into consideration. I have concerns about the work hours. Like I said, I am the next-door neighbor, and I work from home periodically, so I need to know the construction hours.
All right, we'll find out, yeah.
Okay. Additionally, I needed to know what was the plan, the construction plan for things like dust and debris? Again, these questions are because I am the next-door neighbor.
Understood.
And I need to know how this is going to impact our property and, and my house and my life.
Okay.
I have no problem with the new construction. I'm looking forward to it. Two brand-new houses, wonderful. I just have some environmental issues and noise issues. Those were my concerns.
Okay.
And the other thing I had is, is the construction company carrying some type of liability insurance, just in case my house is damaged during the construction?
They have to carry liability insurance.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
There's no way they could get permits without it.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on the application? Okay, can you come back up a second and just answer a couple of those questions first, please?
Yes, of course. So my client is a house builder. He does this for a living, so he will absolutely comply with any Babylon Town codes as to working hours. He'll stay within the limits of which is allowed within the town. Same thing with the dust and debris. He will keep the site neat and clean and mitigate all dust and, and construction debris as the site progresses. And of course, he will have insurance as a requirement.
Yeah. Then no choice. Okay. So maybe when we end the, you could get with the resident, and just in case she has problems, she knows who to go back to?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Anybody else want to be heard on this application?
Nope.
No. Okay. So I am going to approve applications.
Negative.
Oh, I have to, okay, I have to adopt a negative declaration on both applications, 25100A and B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I'm going to approve applications, 25100A and B, with the covenants and restrictions on the planning memo dated August 14th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Please, please get with the neighbors this way. Like I say, she'll have, get their phone number.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all coming down.